... John Peterson, Nigel Sandton, you, we've touched, you, Minzah, and you. Danielle and Al. Thank you. At this time, if anyone would please rise. Danielle would be the one to sign. At the... Thank you very much. The Board will adjourn into Executive Close Session pursuant to Wisconsin Statutes nineteen point oh five per one per one E for the purpose of deliberating or negotiating... Ron Bing, you, at Bird, you, her address. John Bing, you, Tom Miller, you, John Peterson, you, Nigel Sandton, you, we've touched, you, Minzah, and you, Danielle and Al. Thank you. At this time, if anyone would please rise. Danielle would be the one to sign. At the... Thank you very much. The Board will adjourn into Executive Close Session pursuant to Wisconsin Statutes nineteen point oh five per one per one E for the purpose of deliberating or negotiating the purchase of public property, the adjusting of public funds, or conducting other specified business or other competitive or bargaining reasons require a close session. More specifically this evening, we are considering transportation contract negotiations. The Board may reconvene into Open Session pursuant to Wisconsin Statutes nineteen point eight five per one if necessary to act on items discussed during the Executive Session. If anyone does not have an agenda and wishes one, there are some on the table in the box, please help yourself. The first item on the agenda this evening is the Midway Site Plan. Mr. Cooper, I believe the Board members received a copy of the site plan that passed.
Yeah, so I don't, I, um, I'll just briefly review the goals and then if the Board has questions, we can ask questions as long as everybody's satisfied with the question. That's okay?
That would be fine.
Okay. There's five goals in the Midway Site Plan. Um, a lot of the goals in the Midway Plan are the C goals in other site plans because we want to make sure that just by touching on certain areas of the elementary schools. The first goal is to increase parent involvement at Midway School. And as a state initiative, our parent involvement does not only mean that there are meetings, it means, um, parents helping the classroom, they could be parent volunteers. Um, the PTO is, um, one of the goals this year is looking at daycare needs in the recent area, so that's, uh, one of the, one of our studies has a PTO level, um, we're one of the parent surveys. We do one about, um, every two or three years and this year, uh, the parent survey cycle, and we get feedback from that. So, um, just a whole goal, because we know that more parent involvement means higher success for students. So that's a goal we like every year in our site plans. Okay? Um, the second goal is, um, gaining more knowledge and effective instruction strategies to build student learning in ways of math and literacy. And some people who've been on the Board for a while know that math has always been an area of concern at the base school and we continue to focus on it and we will continue to focus on it, um, as long as we see that there's a need. Um, this year, we don't have staff development per se in math, although the teachers meet once a week at noon, I take all the kids outside, do their duties, and, um, the teachers meet after they eat lunch and all they talk about is math, math strategies, the math workbook, uh, new methods, um, and how they can improve instruction in math. But through that discussion, we hope to develop some staff development, uh, opportunities next year in the area of math. We're, um, also looking at a literacy collaborative model in the area of literacy. Uh, we're hoping to, which we need to develop a comprehensive school with one grant that incorporates best practice of literacy and also incorporate math in that grant. And I think we're meeting, uh, again, again this month to, um, to work on the grant and hopefully get some funds for Midway Schools and work on staff development and literacy and math. Okay? Next goal is, uh, intervention strategies. Um, we want to use remedial strategies with students in, um, areas such as Title Nine Recovery Recovery for students who are struggling in reading. Last year, we had a school touring program for students to bring three form of math and learn to, uh, work on math again this year where we target the students that have specific areas of need in math instruction and we work with those students after school. Um, we have something called the Elementary Student Assistance Program. They're in all elementary schools and it works really well and what that is, is the staff gets together, if there's a student who has either academic behavior or social issues that they're facing, the staff gets together and pride themselves on how best to meet their child's needs. And it works and it works with, uh, the students, we set goals for those students and we meet, uh, we'll have a meeting on the student one night and we'll have a follow-up meeting a couple weeks later and to see how the goals are working. A lot of times the goals need to call the parents and get their input and to try different strategies that our teachers recommend and it's a, it's a great process. So it just helps to make sure that we're not moving kids through the cracks. Um, the fourth goal is safe and positive learning environment and this is a goal of the Board that we have every year. And one of the strategies that we feel is very important at Midway Schools is to have our, what's called Midway Traditions. And we have one, a traditional program that we have, Edna's Beckinsale, we've had that since nineteen ninety, we have a program last Friday, but there was some of the veterans in, uh, auxiliary and contributing to our program. And our next traditional program is going to be this Friday, which is our Senior Citizens Edge, which you're all invited to. And that's become part of the Midway Tradition. And it's important for schools to have those traditions and we use those traditions as, as learning, uh, opportunities for the students as well. Um, we like to award students, we're going to be good, we have awards here at the end of the year. We, um, we have our emergency plans in place. The new one that we're, uh, just starting to study now is the ventilation. You know, number five, ventilation system, we have to study to make sure we know where the, uh, things and how to vent the heating system out of school, but, um, obviously with some of the skills that have been around the country, that's one thing that, uh, Mr. Council has gotten out to us now that we have to, um, have more knowledge of. And even things like, uh, where we go in case we have to close school, we've been going over all those kinds of plans. So safety is our issue that we deal with. And the last plan, the last goal is using data and that's one of the goals that all the elementary schools have and how we use data to improve student learning. And, um, we use, we've been using data every year on our, our classroom, or, uh, excuse me, our district assessments, but today, we had a grade speaker who talked to the staff and talked about principles about, uh, classroom assessment and that has to be a driving focus behind the data. So that's the Midway Site Plan.
Wow. Any questions or comments from Board members?
The easy one, the first one, yes. Um, do we increase parent involvement at Midway? Has it been successful? Well, it's never successful enough, though. Okay. The other is, uh, we've always had great parents support at Midway. We really have, and we're, um, very fortunate to have, uh, the great parents out there that we have, but because of what Midway's looking, it's tough for a lot of parents during school day before, after school to, to get to Midway because a lot of times they're working very well or they're working on the side. It's the isolation of the board makes, uh, it pop sometimes with the parents at school. Now, that doesn't just mean the parents could involve the grandparents or too, right? And so then, and you increase it all, especially any of your activities or special day, Midway days or something. The many special days that we have are always well attended too, but just that I think that, and we'd like to see more.
Time to children.
Um, I guess I'm just going to have to give you a little bit more on the level three of elementary students. Please, I'd like to do an exit, uh, thank you for the help. And then doing two big ones, sort of how you identify particular students, if a teacher comes to you or how that student gets identified. And the other question was, in an average year, uh, how many of these meetings would you have a way to, how many particular students would you focus on and just try to provide them some extra?
The process is the teacher, the teacher will come to me with a concern or we have our, our building, um, the person who's on duty should constantly our building, uh, is our fifth grade teacher, Mrs. Norwich, and she's also in charge of what we call USAP, Elementary Student Assistance Program. So the teacher later come to her or myself, whether concerned about a child. And so from there, we also, we're setting a meeting, an USAP meeting. And it usually involves, uh, two months, before or after school. And like I said, the brainstorming sessions, I would say that in an average year, it's probably a hundred fifty kids. For the time of school, we had about a hundred fifteen kids. Some of the larger schools have more kids. In fact, I think Cambridge has two Z coordinators because they're providing kids.
The main is to... I was just going to comment about the community support they must have at Midway. Um, we attended the Halloween Parade at Midway School, my first experience as a grandparent in an elementary school. Two things amazed me that day. Number one, the chairs were all full, they had chairs on two sides of the gym and every single one of them was filled with an adult. And then all the kids came in, the whole school, and they all had their Halloween costumes and you can imagine how disruptive that could be. Then Mr. Cooper was standing in the middle of the gym, moving. Shh. And then, oh, God. Amazing. My story on this day. Um, just, just a question, um, there are two about your math lunch meetings.
Yes.
Do you, are you the first student to do this? And do you see this, um, be, uh, the beginning of many strategies to find that special time for our math teachers to, to share great ideas?
We, um, I don't know if we're just pre-school because, um, the schools that run through the way of workshop training have used, uh, this lunch type meeting as a way for the teachers to get together and talk about writers workshops. So that's how we learned about it and the teachers liked it so much that they wanted to continue. So last year was, um, reading literacy, when's our lunch meeting? This year is our math. So it's, uh, it's, you know, and it's them calling the meeting themselves and them wanting to do it. And they just say...
You take the recess.
I take recess.
Good, thank you. Anyone else? Jeff?
Just a quick comment after, uh...
Yes.
Thanks, Joe. Can I? If you let anybody in, you can joke, so you... Uh, just briefly, I just want to say thank you. Uh, I read this over and I think it will go in the efforts that you and your staff put into Midway that's coming up for kids and I appreciate your efforts out there. Thank you. Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay. As I was getting touch on, the student systems program time card and, uh, we got the math lunch, which I thought was neat and parent involved. So again, thank you very much for your time, thank you for coming this evening, and you win a prize for the quickest presentation. The next item on the agenda is the High School Site Plan. Um, Mr. Graham, would you like to start out?
Uh, yes, Sally, we're going to be going over the, um, High School Site Plan. The focus is under two major goals. Goal number one being to improve student success and goal number two is to improve curriculum content. Under each of these goals are several strategies which myself, my department chairs, which are here tonight, they're instrumental in drafting what we draft here this evening. And, um, I guess I call them my field generals because they're there, they're in the classroom, they have firsthand knowledge of what's going on, what we need to do to improve, uh, High School, to improve our district. And, uh, I'd just like to tell you thank you, rather than who, who, anybody else, they did a very good job on this. Um, hopefully we'll give a short synopsis for each of the strategies. If you have questions, um, please, uh, raise your hand at that time and hopefully they'll be able to, um, answer them. Many of the things that you see here in our site plan are currently in operation, so it's not exactly, you know, waiting until November to start. We started this back in October, it just took us a while before we got the floor to see them. So without further ado, we will start with, um, Sally, Marla, and Jeff.
Ben, before we start, can I point a video on Housekeeping, we have a number of people out here outside the door, I don't know if we can ask them in or make some other chairs available?
Senior, I have some chairs here, if anyone wants to come in, or do you, Mr. Harrington? We can wait just a minute, early, until we get some of them. Four or five chairs, if I can, if I can, if I can. Everyone's in that wants to be in?
Maybe four E's so that we're not playing musical chairs where everybody's in place, if it's okay. I'd just like everybody to present a portion of the site plan where they're seated, if that's okay?
That would be fine.
And I'll kick it off. We actually did start in October, we didn't start in September, stand up.
It's still about there.
Did start in September, we actually started in August with the transition team and I guess maybe go, uh, improper that we start with the transition team being that we'll be incoming freshmen, uh, Foundation for Success needed to be laid on a yearly basis. And, uh, it kicked off with a orientation open house of freshmen to the high school where the turnout, uh, was great. Uh, we had eighty-four percent of freshmen attend that open house with parents. Uh, we know that by the number of schedules that were handed down on that night, that's something that we're going to look to continue and build on. Um, which brought us into this year and looking for next year is freshman with the eighth graders. Uh, I was putting in charge and putting together a transition team and I right away turned to individuals that had been involved with us before. Marla Tungo, who was a great help in Hannah Wade, both of these ladies did a fantastic job in, in helping facilitating the transition team. Others that were on the team were high school and middle school guidance and also the Pro Gile principals. Uh, and what we did was, uh, formulated where we went to, met at the middle school, uh, to discuss the tour of the high school, when registration and when scheduling was going to be done. Usually that's done second semester. This year, uh, for the need, at the request of Mr. Harrington, to have scheduling done by the end of the first semester, uh, we had to move everything up. And I thought the team did a very nice job and I laid you most high rate with making those adjustments. Uh, again, Hannah Wade, being that she is going to be the freshman guidance counselor next year, this year she has seniors, uh, was heavily involved in presenting. Um, she went to the middle school, went to the Pro Gile schools to speak with the eighth graders on schedule and helping them prepare. She put together a modified, uh, class or course list for them to look at for classes and that I then coordinated with a tour that we did on the sixteenth of October, a tour of the high school, which I thought went very well and I will continue again next year. And we did it on a half day, which seemed a little too, just the timetable, table was good. Uh, what is, one of our goal, uh, our goal, mine goal, the team, is to continue to build off of that. I guess one thing that I'd like to see in the future is to, uh, have more contact among eighth grade and freshman teachers to help that, that transition to be even smoother and to learn more scope and sequence of, uh, course offerings, uh, so everybody has a full understanding of when those eighth graders come in because it is a tough, uh, transition. And, um, and we talked, and also too, I guess I should say, in working with the freshmen and she's now here to make, uh, Tracy Robin, the new freshman guidance counselor. I also too, I want to commend her, she's, she's done a great job in working with the freshmen, being with the freshmen, being very proactive with them, being with them on a group but also on an individual basis. And, uh, we're going to continue that Tuesday, on the seventh, third, and fourth, uh, when we get the freshmen registered for next year. So that's the transition.
Uh, part of the transition, my name is Sally Fong, probably a teacher at the high school. And, um, time, going to just briefly talk about the link group up to you that we're looking at the base school, that's one of the items that was on there and I guess the Board is going to have some further discussion later. Uh, I just wanted to make sure that everyone did receive information about the link group. Okay? So without taking up any time for site plan, I'll just address any questions about that later.
Thank you, Sally. Who's next?
It's getting a little loud, I'm staying over here because I like to be on TV. Second part of the goal is to reduce the level of absenteeism and truancy. Uh, we've been looking at that, that's an ongoing issue that we always, uh, deal with. Um, uh, for, um, just to give you background of how we do that, uh, we've implemented new hall monitors, um, uh, we have staff personnel that's, uh, working the hallways to try to reduce the level of traffic, uh, in the hallway. Uh, we are working, uh, with the community, keeping them updated as to changes in state statutes and whatnot. Uh, usually we do that first day of school, freshman orientation, and we do that throughout the year, whether by, uh, newsletter or, uh, parent teacher conferences. We have Institute, the Farm Master, the NMSU, we used to have it at the high school, uh, years past and we tried, uh, new way of, uh, working the truancy and, uh, Farm Master shows that they've worked out some kinks, so we're going back to Farm Master just to see if, if we can, you know, shore it up a little bit. Um, Marilyn, our tenant secretary, works primarily with Farm Master. Um, that basic system is set up for phone calls home if you miss, uh, more than two class periods out of the day. And the reason why we can't, if more than two class periods out of the day is just shoot numbers. What we also do is we request teachers, if they're having problems not seeing students in class, they either email us or send us a note or even come down and talk to us about students if they haven't seen you address immediately. We do follow state statutes and we, uh, the real thumb is if they miss five class periods, when they, I refer to, uh, the office, a letter is sent home, a formal letter by myself and Mr. Ramo, and we get an truancy, habitual truancy situation. At that time, we request a parent meeting, when the parents come in, we talk about the situations, what the possible changes to try and entice the students back to school. Uh, our main goal is if the student is in class and they can learn, they're going to succeed and that's, uh, that's what we push. Uh, if we still have continuing problems and we, uh, we go to the next step, which is local law enforcement will, will then cite them for court hearing and then we work directly with, uh, the judges in town, Judge Nolan and Judge Harvey. Uh, we do also work with, uh, social services in this capacity as well and, uh, they've been a great help in terms of coordinating efforts. Um, we've opened up communication lines a little better and we have a good working relationship right now with some of our kids. Uh, so that's basically the, the truancy situation.
Thank you, Jeff. Jeff, do you have a question?
Yeah, uh, maybe a few more here, but something I don't see, but which would be to, we talk to the kids and tell them, why are they skipping? Well, my, my, my senior class, very truancy, is a, is a deeper problem that is inspiring these things to leave our school or skip a classroom. And I think we need to, we can look a little harder addressing the, the problem rather than, uh, worrying about do we have monitors in the hallway to catch them or, uh, making sure that we get, uh, the proper steps in place for punishing them. I mean, we need, we need to do that, they need to know those consequences, what we need to look at.
And we don't, you know, we don't skip that step. We, you know, we get in there, we talk to the students and we try to find out why that's going on. Something could be as simple as, I don't know anybody in that class, but I do have friends in this class and we can make the switch. I mean, and those are easy ones and, uh, you know, those are things that we can do and that's why we try to meet, uh, with the students and with the parents, which is why we send out the formal letter stating that we need to meet to discuss the situation. Um, we don't automatically, you know, hit five, seven over the courts. We try to take steps to, to make the adjustments with them. We try to find out what's going on with the student. Each student's different and you might have students that have just been habitual skippers for a long time and it's hard for them to break the habit, you know, and that happens. We try to do things that, you know, we can tomorrow to entice them to come to school, whether it's change of schedule, change now or whatnot. All things could be a family problem, so we do address those issues somewhere within the time plan.
You know, I was going to say too, and, and the staff, um, also too, will sit on those meetings, um, really we exhaust any and every possible scenario before, um, before it's taken to court. And with that, um, not just formal days with myself, Mr. McCartney, parents and staff, but staff members will address students, you know, well before that situation arises as well and, you know, and again, before it goes to court, we've...
Once it reaches that level, then we follow, and we, we communicate with the parents. We don't automatically make the decision, we work with the parents and the parents are usually the one saying, send it, because I feel that's the next step and we say, we may agree or, or let's look for another step or whatnot, or we'll suggest, you know, you know, send it. And then we work with the parents in that aspect, so, you know, continuing, looking at it and trying to make changes and make a positive for our kids in our school. It's maybe a little bit early, but do we have some sense, you know, as to if the numbers are greater or less, what it seems, but I'm just trying to tell you right now, I have the numbers for me and I know how that, kind of...
Well, I could give you an example, at this point, for freshman students, um, there have been five that have been referred to court out of a class of about three hundred and fifteen, I believe, freshmen, at the freshman level. I deal with freshmen and juniors, Mr. McCarthy deals with sophomores and seniors. And as it gets, as, as the students are, get older, um, and where there maybe has been truancy problems, as far as the exact number and who's going to court, it gets a little bit more fuzzy because they may have been issued papers last year and pending versus new initiated. From what I'm hearing from staff and from adminis-, uh, administration that's in place, that, that the problem is much better than what it has been in the past and I think has continued to get better.
And is, is that you would try, you know, look at, like at the end of the quarter and semester, what happened in the year?
Well, we, we can look at it at the end of semester. Um, we've, uh, we've experienced some glitches along the way and also that, you know, as lead to, we've got a lot of carryover cases, which, you know, you know, it's hard to, to figure out how you're going to work that in the numbers. I mean, we can come up with some numbers that, uh, that are going to be pretty close probably at the end of the semester, but it'll probably give us a better idea. We haven't had a chance to really get a consistent flow for where we're at right now and I think as, as this quarter moves on, we're going to be able to get those numbers and in my last, you know, the first semester, we compiled it, the scoreboard and, and presented those.
I guess I would like to, you know, have you look at those at, at that point, so we have some idea of what you're doing, if you're adding the right direction or if there's something more.
We plan on doing that as well.
Thank you.
Okay, Jeff?
Yes.
Um, but first of all, I'd like to say that, um, I think that is a good question and, and listening to Mr. McCartney, I'm no doubt that the, uh, the people, the staff and administration at the high school are trying to figure out exactly where our kids miss school. And I think last year by member faculty, we did have an improvement over what we'd seen in the past. I'd like to also just remind the Board and Mr. McCartney and the administration at the high school that, uh, this Board in action to community wishes did close campus in our school district. And so I find it very important that we have monitors in the hallways, we have people aware that we can determine if rules may be on campus or rules not be on campus. So I appreciate those efforts, thank you.
Okay. Are there any other questions, Jeff, on truancy, absenteeism? Okay, then we can move on to the next...
That's me.
Okay.
I'm going to add some help with, uh, Hannah Wade. Uh, we've been quoting the episodes from... We've been courting the issues for alternative school, our AT-LIS program, Movenet and HSCD, Ron and Lynn, set the tone, at least last year, in terms of our AT-LIS programs that we have in place now. What we've done is try to, again, tighten them up, make them pretty clean, so that the kids are getting the opportunities that they deserve. We have expanded this year to include Movenet, which is a vital partner in our AT-LIS program. Movenet is, I've heard some of this already, can be a best-known program to get more kids an opportunity to gain credit and get back on track, or get them to a place that they can graduate. Right now in Movenet, we have 33 students signed up throughout a seven-hour day. We don't offer a fifth hour, because it's the lunchtime for our staff, but we do offer every other hour, plus we have a couple of students that come in early bird to get on Movenet. We have our AT-LIS school, which is an in-house onsite program that's attached to our Movenet lab. We do have 10 to 12 students currently registered in that program. Alternative school, we have nine students that's off-site in the church. And I've gone out on a number of occasions, Ms. Wade has gone over there, just to make sure that everything's going okay, and everything is going pretty good. Our HSCD program, Mr. Ryan is spearheading that, and he has a management of five students that we can take in there. We've got some kids that are already starting to rotate through, we've gone through with our committees, and we're starting to get more kids in, so we're giving our kids an opportunity, which makes all of us feel pretty good. You'd like to take one?
We did provide you with a handout, and we looked at its analysis, the contract, a credit definition, student placement. Sometimes we interchange those terms, that we have the alternative schools, we try to define those terms the way that we actually use them. And Jeff has given you the numbers there. In addition, on the back of that, we provided you with a letter that we sent out, and we could be some more question about attendance, with how I do my date, I ask why, that's how. Every student that comes in, you know, the line is, why do you choose this? And it's the same with attendance, as it is with gain-credit deficiencies. So I really appreciate you bringing up that, because that's the key, that's how we make changes, to find out why it's happening, so thank you. So one thing that we do is we do a letter that's called Progress for Graduation. It highly involves parents, because of course, as we know, parents are the most significant factor in student achievement. Their achievement towards school is what makes the difference for kids, and we do try to involve them who require on the front of the contract, that also be involved and agree to that contract, and to agree to rules as well. Also, I watched the school board meeting on Channel 3, it was the October 30th meeting, and I was so interested in the Movenet part, and Miss Dettner asked the question about use and time of computer labs in the district, and I thought, oh, good, now I can show you about Movenet. It's like, I brought you a copy of that, and this is for me, because it shows you exactly how long these students are on there, and what they're doing. And I'm going to warn you, I brought a sample of somebody who's not being successful, so you can see, we actually have this information, so it's really, it is really a means data to make decisions about student achievement. So I gave a sample of that. Also, we have a progressive mentor for freshmen, and that's the next letter, which is part of the accelerated assistance program at the high school, so we can see that parents have an option to place their children in that. We have four content areas, one teacher from each area, English, math, science and social studies, so that's another preventative there, because at this time, freshmen are not placed in Movenet or alternative school or AT-LIS programs, we're trying to still do some gradation in those ways. And the last item that I included in this document is called our documentation generation, and that's part of the new intervention folder that's coming out, and I think it's a more positive way to gather information for us to survive, so.
Getting back to, we're going to just briefly go through some of the sites that we have. Movenet, like I mentioned before, we have 20 sites available, 20 hookups that can be used throughout the building. We essentially locate 14 computers, and we refer to as our Movenet lab, that is our main emphasis for the Movenet program. We have five computers in the HSCD room, which is attached, but we'll have Movenet capabilities. We also have specialized teachers that also have Movenet capabilities up in the room, so that the kids can actually use them outside of the lab, but in the building still. We, let's see, we had some delays, getting Movenet up and running, but we're up and running now, and we're trying to work through some of the glitches. We went to a couple of schools and observed how Movenet runs, and even when this is our first year, we feel we're pretty successful, we weigh heavily on the attendance, heavily on the effort of the students to be in this program. We've, Movenet is not something that's going to be really easy for a kid to get through. It still requires content, reading, note-taking, et cetera. So this isn't going to be a killer app for all kids, but it's an opportunity to get them out of, per se, the regular classroom setting, and do some independent work, and see if that contributes them to excite and encourage content. Let's see. We break this down in a few ways, we take seniors, and then we offer the Movenet program to look at their credits, we find out whether, how credit deficient they are, we give them the opportunity to accumulate as much credit as they can to graduate. Basically, when they become senior, they've got priority, because we actually, we want to get them through and get them to graduate. Juniors, we capped off and said, for the time being, we're going to allow them to take up to two credits for the year with Movenet, as a way to get them back on track. Sophomores, I think we've come to a decision that they can get one. And freshmen, we haven't addressed that yet, because we're taking it slow. The nice thing about the Movenet lab and the other AT-LIS programs that we have is that we've already addressed probably 99% of the senior class in terms of their needs, and we have them either on track to graduate or in one of our programs, or actually some of them have choose not to partake, which is, it's heartbreaking, but there's not much we can do if they choose not to do it, we can't force it. We have addressed it with the junior class, we have probably 98% of our junior class even on track in the same fashion. And we're now in the process of working on sophomore class, so it's working, we're able to get them and catch them at a younger age, and try to make sure that they stay on track. Once they get in the Movenet program, and do have the criteria and requirements, if they're not showing effort, they're not attending, then we're going to pull them back out, and we require an attendance, if it's an attendance issue, we require a length of attendance for them to be perfect, and then we can get them back in, kind of an incentive. And as we've worked on a couple of kids already, they realize that they need the program, they thought that they could take advantage of it, we pull them out, now they're coming with great attendance, and then we bring them back in, so that's kind of where we're at with the Movenet.
Any questions on Movenet? Can you proceed? Or anything in the section?
Jeff, I wanted to, or maybe Hannah, the accelerated assistance program, can you give us an idea of numbers of kids who are using that, either by academic area or class?
I'm sorry to give you the exact numbers, but those are more class sizes, and can be...
About six per core, or six per class.
Okay, so six per.
And what is Movenet in and out of that? And on a new base basis, they do study skills, they test their skills in addition to the content, and so it's really a nice way for kids to continue their transition.
Thank you. Jeff?
Last year, our AT-LIS program that we run was off-campus, and we're going back on-campus, and there was a lot of good comments about how that worked to be off-campus last year. I'm wondering, how is that, how is that going with the bad situation?
We talked about that, when we brought back on-campus was the HSCD program to save the district monies, and it's gone, due effect, it's right next door to my office, it's well observed, and it's running very smoothly.
Okay, good.
Any more questions? Okay, let's proceed. To the next one.
As a worker on the semester, I always have a few times, I'm a senior, future citizens here, that are on campus, at the ownership department. Also, I want to mention a point against climate, but I also belong with a 6-day EM club, the department chairs of the meetings of the school, everyone is faithful to that as a 6-day EM. And now that our site plan is, is helping to gather, we're actually even one Movenet more.
In addressing climate, I'm going to tell you that I have a student, Jessica B., and she is a cognitively disabled student in our class, and has given a tremendous effort the first quarter of this year, and has turned up very, very successful, and has felt good about her effort. I have another student, Ms. R., who is a member of the National Arts Society, and she is a member of Academic Capron, and she too has given extraordinary effort, and her brain level is much different than Jessica's, but they both have achieved a high level of achievement based upon what they are capable of doing. In the middle of all that, we have a range of all of the middle-level kids, also in the department, who have given good effort. And what I read into is, and get to your point, Mrs. R., is that when the product is completed, we, not only rent them, but all of the departments in the school, have opportunities for the kids to show off their stuff, and, you know, with exhibits, or with hallway things, or things outside the school building, or events. And I see that product coming from the kids, whether it's an art product, or a musical product, or something else, I see that as contributing to the school climate, but the real climate is the people, it's the kids and the staff in the school. The things that you see under the lights and the displays are just that product of it. But the best part of it is, that product is indicative of success in building self-esteem and building confidence in each and every kid who participates in looking toward being able to do that. A couple of the things, in addition to the obvious things, I call exhibits and school work, women's exhibits are, we're in the planning stages of developing something for Channel 3 in the way of a video musical, student dialogue, ongoing thing in that education district, not just the high school. And we're also looking at a website to put student artwork on with explanation of the types of things that the kids are involved in, and planning the regular annual shows, which we're hoping to put back into our school calendar annually, because one of the students recently came up with this brainstorm idea that just blew by me for the last couple of years that we've been learning about, and it was, Mrs. R., why can't we have a show in our school library? So, and before, we had the consideration of security, and we weren't able to lock things up, but now we've covered it with Mr. Brown, covered it with other people that have to make the decision, and I think we're going to be looking at a big spring show, and we need to do something similar to the arts festival that was a tradition in the past. So my main point is, the school climate is the Daniels' and the Jessicas', and the teachers in the building, and the support staff, that's the climate. What we see in the halls is just a product of that.
Any questions? Okay, go ahead.
I'm the student coordinator, and again, I have to just mention, we are the envy of all the schools in the consortium because of our businesses. We get so much support for all of our programs, we were eager this past year to start some new programs. We just went wild with his CAD, and with the manufacturing, unbelievable, sound mountain project, training co-op, we're part of it for the whole state of Wisconsin, as well as we're going to start our co-op, a foreign language co-op. The state has given us free rein to go to globe to get numbers, and thanks to our community, we can do it. We also have junior and senior chamber, and now that she's been in this position for a couple of years, she is coming to all of our school tour meetings, and she wants to get really involved, more than ever had the chamber involved with the school district, pre-K through 12. And she along with Wisconsin Public Service invited Frank and Brian and myself to, I mean, recently, it was called U-BEC, it's Utility Business Education Coordination, coordination, and it's where Wisconsin Public Service, that is, going to put some bucks behind it, to do an evaluation of our community, to see how the community can work better with the school. Because all of the HR directors, that's all the, you know, why aren't these kids able to do the really, why aren't they able to do this? Or maybe we could get the businesses into the school to see what we are doing, and it's that type of stuff. So it's, we got the go-ahead, we're going to do it for Lincoln County, so Tomahawk Schools are going to be involved with this U-BEC, so you'll probably be hearing more of that down the road. And I just have to add one more thing, I remember this last year, I'm giving here with our site plan, and I was very concerned about youth options, and I think I said to some of you, you know, we have to look into this, this is costing our district way too much money. And I think with our youth apprenticeship program, I don't want anything to do with youth options, I was against it, it was costing our district money, but with the youth apprenticeship program, and using some of the courses at the technical schools, but we received the grant to pay it for, so it didn't cost the district any money. But what happened, which none of us really thought would happen, that the instructors down at the tech, all of a sudden, had the students in youth options, who were just there. And then you had the students that were in youth apprenticeship, who had a mentor back at the high school, wondering, how are they doing every now and then, would you give us a report? They're calling, saying, do you have good attendance? You know, are our students going to your classes? If they aren't, we want to know back home, because we're going to do something about it. And they had the government out of Madison, recently, when all of the government officials from Madison were in Wausau, I was down there and had the privilege to talk to quite a few of them. And Dr. Ernst from NTC mentioned that he has taken a complete turn while on youth options. And he said, he talked to all the superintendents recently, and heard their concerns about all the costs. It is two school districts and a tiny budget cuts, and how, he told us that he's looking more into the tech, putting money into youth apprenticeship, working with the schools, so that the mentors back at the high school level, helping these high school students that do need the tech, maybe to take courses that we don't offer, like an automotive, we don't have an automotive shop, we do have to send the students two days a week for a class down there. I went, but I'm on automotive this semester, because we have a couple of, now they're taking this class, and I think that's maybe one way we're going to turn around with youth options. So.
Any questions for Mara? Okay.
Observation from, probably from the activities and so, high school environment, I've seen a vast improvement over the years, in cooperation between teachers. Really, when I was here, I felt I was really proud, and the teachers were very progressive of the kids, and kids weren't able to participate in a lot of different events. And so, right now, when we've tried to work with everybody, the level of cooperation has really improved a lot. And we are able to, I think, let kids, you know, various types of activities, and work out more of the conflicts. Now, I think it really is the goal, and I see vast improvements, and so kids can participate in the sports, and the music games, and art things, and debate and the physics and so on. And we try to, we don't shut the bus, or we run somebody to pick them up, and we get them there somehow, and with all the things they work out, so I think that's very powerful for the school. I think the kids are able to do more things, and this climate, I think, has improved vastly, so we'd be happy to hear that.
Thank you, Dale. Any comments, your questions before we move on?
I just have a couple of comments, kind of, and some things that Dale had commented on. Our school has just been developed of curriculum programs, extracurricular, co-curricular, and if you're in a board at school, probably from 16, and then one until all over the night, there are kids involved in activities, doing things that enrich their lives, in many ways, enrich our lives too. This fall, we had a band, very, very successful, we have the state championship, the football team is doing great things, and those are items that we read about, we see almost every day, but there are so many more things going on, you really have to visit the school once in a while and see this. I'm a part of an activity at the Capron, we have kids that read at 7:00 in the morning, twice a week, and yesterday, they took a battery of tests that, frankly, I would not have wanted to take, not for the sake of hurt. Anyways, my math skills are very, very good. Anyways, my math skills are very, very good. But watching those kids perform on that test, it really makes you feel good that the middle school has all these programs to offer and we've got kids that are enthusiastic about participating in them. Middle schools, again, just referring to the capron, they really offer it because there's enough interest. But we had probably 20 kids regularly reading or willing to study art, music, language and literature, econ, science, and math. So we've got some really good things going on and we'd like to continue that. But that's all for the school climate thing too.
Thank you. Any comments from you? Okay, can we move on to the next block?
She's making, I believe, we all have this going, crack it. This is something I actually said about the high school, two years ago, committee was formed and we toured a few schools within the state that were doing shared decision-making. We found some things that worked and some things that didn't work. We then made the decision at the high school that we would continue with the process. We hired a facilitator last, two school years ago, and we worked out our own version of shared decision-making. We came up with bylaws and made things about shared decision-making. We basically trained that group, that original committee. And then the following school year, we initiated the process, that was last year, we initiated shared decision-making. Many of that original committee members, those original committee members became part of what we call the NHS council. Those people are pretty familiar with the process already, when we started it. And last year, we tried it with the whole staff. We had several action teams. Our first action team dealt with the testing, the technical testing, and we had great success. The action team came up with a wonderful plan, and the whole staff bought into it, shared decision-making, and worked wonderfully. Then we tried biting off two bits of a piece. We tried to look at the schedule, last year, the high school's schedule. It was huge. And we realized that after the fact, and we realized also that the staff did not know much about shared decision-making. The council members knew a lot about shared decision-making, but the general staff knew they would have like a five-minute in-service at the beginning of school. So we made a decision that the staff needed to be trained. So we hired a partner of the facilitator that the original committee had worked with. And this school year, our first day of school, our first day with the staff, we spent in-service the entire staff about the shared decision-making process. That's what most of this package is, is the staff's input, that what happens during that facilitation. I think everybody knew a lot about it. Everybody was excited about it after this in-service. I got a lot of very good feedback about the in-service from the staff. So I think the staff bought into it and I think they understood the process more. And we've started it up fresh again this year, and so far, we have three action teams working right now on issues at the high school. And again, we're tackling the big one of scheduling, that's one of our big ones. We're also tackling the lead crew, which I will talk about later. And we're tackling technology priorities on the standards goes at the high school. I think it's going very, very well. Because of the input that we received from the staff, the NHS council was able to rethink our own things, when we thought the bylaws a little bit, we changed the rules a little bit, to more address what the staff's needs were. And I think we're willing, and it seems to be working pretty well. Is there anything that you noticed or like that?
Any questions for Jim?
I'm just gonna ask, how are the action committees put together?
The NHS council, if you look on the very first page of this, that's the council members. This is faculty members, it consists of parents, consists of students, the principal, and Jeff, as I know, also in the school board. Staff members or anyone else, it can be, it can come from the community, it can come from students. There are action request forms in the library of the high school. Anyone can go in and fill out one of those action request forms. The issue might depend on them. If you're not happy with the lunch hours or whatever, they can bring that up as an issue. Then it comes to the council. The council kind of hammers it out. The council considers whether it really is something that an action team could deal with, or whether it is a broad issue, or whether, we also consider whether it's in violation of a law. That varies from state law, federal law, whatever. So we find, too, when you look at it and consider it carefully as to whether it should go to an action team. If we decide, yes, it should go to an action team, we send it, we try to create, Brian will put out the call for anybody that is interested, we do that on an action team, and then they start on it. We're very careful with the action team, that we don't have individuals with a banana, or that are just trying to drive something through. We're careful that we get a mix of individuals on our action team, that we get a popular audience, that everybody's heard. Action teams consist of faculty members, but things have to come back to the site council. They make decisions, the action team makes decisions. Communications is the biggest issue here, that was what we didn't have the first time around, a lack of communication. This time, the action teams communicate with the faculty and with everybody else via the newsletters, via email, to the staff of staff meetings. We wanna get a dialogue. We wanna know right from the start if there are any problems and if, or if things are gonna go well. So action teams consider things, they come up with, or they consider the best solution to the problem, bring it back to the entire staff. In the meantime, everybody else has had the opportunity to communicate. The things that we're talking about right now have been brought up with students, they have been placed in newsletters, et cetera. So everybody, literally, students has had some chance to input. And if a consensus is reached among the staff members and everything else, then it becomes something that we're gonna hear that we're gonna implement.
Well, I can go on for, because this is not gonna be easy, but it wasn't like we just decided to try and work for a way to wait, and there were a lot of successes, and we could keep going. And there were successes, but I mean, we're continuing, you know, sometimes things didn't work, and so the staff was disappointed and wasn't prepared to go from there. And we just kept going and figuring out if it was not working. And it sounds now like, like there's really been plans and good training and things going on. I think.
And we considered whether we were on, whether or not, last year, it was a hard decision, but we thought, what are our alternatives? Whether it was either top-down decisions or give the staff some input. So we decided to continue with it. And this year, I think it's going well.
Thank you, Tim. On to the next block.
Just to briefly update you on our working system program, plan of action that we have at the high school. Five years ago, when I came to Moe, there wasn't a lot of structure in our building at the high school. If a staff member or a student goes down with an emergency, how to act upon it, and the steps that are needed to take. And I've done through a couple of principles already. So it's been great because this year, I went to Brian and Ryan and I pleaded my case again to get more and more staff members and more student body. And I kind of did this in the growth. In the physical education program, we started training the student body. I taught it through CPR in first aid. Every single freshman that goes through our district has opportunity to become certified in CPR in first aid. And I am a red cross instructor, so I do all the testing. And all of the physical education teachers in our department also teach that. So every single student has that opportunity. Every year, it starts to grow more and more, the number of students that wanna become certified. So in our building, we start at the base of all the student body, we have about 50 to 100 students every year that get certified. So we have a lot of students in our building that can react to an emergency appropriately. Then last year, we had five or six teachers that got twisted into getting trained, and they were skeptical about it because they had been trained previously or whatever reason. This year, I'm very proud because Brian gave me the green light to get in there and take a day and get training. Our department heads all volunteered somebody to step in and get training. We have pitch faders, we have a lot, all the councils, we've really helped, and we've put it into a total building plan now. Brian worked with us in getting some funding, so we have emergency blankets, supplies, pocket masks for all of the people that have been trained. My athletic co-op kids, we have five very, very knowledgeable, professional young people in our building, they're CPR pros. And they have, all of these names are posted, so whoever in our building knows who we are or someone goes down. So we have a whole action team now, the whole building. And we have approximately 20 staff members and administrators that are also trained, besides our nurse and the other normal professional people that have that training. So it's a very good climate right now. We bought first aid kits, we have six stations in our building that have first aid kits. We include all different types of equipment that might be needed in case it's very close because we've got in our building, it's a long way down to the training room, the Band-Aids are a long ways, you don't work if someone goes down. So now with all of these kits, blankets, and emergency equipment, we have the people trained to do it. And it's just a very feasible way to protect everyone in the building.
Any questions for Sam? Okay, thank you, Sam. The last one is our technology, we're gonna be doing a little bit of community. Okay. Thank you, Moe. Great to talk to you. For Angela too, and that's a good curriculum content. The first block indicates integration of curriculum, and that's really two-pronged. One of our interpretations is that we're integrating various disciplines together so that we teach in a connected way to the kids, so they see the connections between art and science, or business and social study. That math isn't in this room, and English isn't in this.